Allegiance. Sorry about that, we're going to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I apologize, we were a little late during our executive session. A roll call, we have everybody here, I believe? Yeah, everybody's here. Where is Jeez over here? We have one executive session, we did have an executive session to discuss personnel prior to this meeting, and we're going to move on to Section 3.1 Presentations.
Mr. Drenzo? And Mr. Anspach?
First of all, we would like to announce that we had our Day of Service last week, Tuesday, May 17th. And before we get into any of these specifics, I'd like to direct our attention back to this multimedia presentation. I know it's a little bit difficult to see, but this was a little bit of a snapshot of some of the things that we did last Tuesday. So really, that was outstanding by the students. And really, I just wanted to kind of report out, and we have two students with us here this evening. One of them shares the same poison ivy that I've received, so we'll scratch a little bit. But this is really the culmination of the entire year. This year, over 400 students and staff have participated in at least one type of community service activity. And whether it's been in the school community or within our townships, et cetera, it's very commendable. There's been about over 25 different community service groups that have gone out and have, you know, contributed throughout our townships and community. And really, the 17th was the kind of culminating event. And really, we had 20 kids come out on their day off from school, which, again, is quite the feat, and we're very proud of them for what they do every year. But specifically coming out the other day was above and beyond. Last week, our cross-country team contributed $5,500 from the benefits from the Toshur Turkey. So again, this is year-long activities, and this year, over 400, like I said, students. We even had one of our CMD drivers participate. Wendy Akry was pulling weeds with us the other day at Green Allies in the Arboretum. So I'd like to introduce Liam and Nicole, and they're going to give you a quick 20-second view on what their day was like. So I'll introduce these two, and I'll step away. So thank you.
Hello, I'm Nicole Aki, and I was one of the many students who participated at the Day of Service. I think the Day of Service was a really good opportunity because we all got to give back to our community as a group, so it wasn't just like an individual thing. And it was also provided to us by the school, which I think was very helpful, because I think a lot of us have had a lot of issues or troubles trying to find community service opportunities. So it was nice that it was given to us by the school and provided by the school, and that we were able to do it as a group.
I mean, Nicole kind of already said everything that we did. But I think it was honestly like a lot of fun to work with like a group of people that I know, like, just like giving back to the community and doing something good. And it was also really nice that day. So... But I did get poison ivy, which is unfortunate, but...
One last thing that I do also want to highlight, in addition to our Day of Service, is this Saturday, members of our field hockey team, volleyball team, football team, and field hockey team, and I know Coach Sprouls back here in attendance tonight, they attended the Highland Memorial Cemetery, and they planted flags in the ground for our veterans. So it's a great tradition that we have, and it's a credit to, again, Saturday, 60 students out serving our community, which is a good tradition of ours. So again, thank you to our coaches and our athletes, and it's always a good day to grow when our kids are involved in the community. So thank you.
Along with that note, I did want to recognize the Booster Club this year, because we weren't able to give a donation last year, but this year, they donated $3,000 to the Cancer Center for the Patient Care Fund. So it's all good cause.
All right, we're going to move on to public comment. Now, I have four here, three are for second, one for the first. Do I have anybody else that wants to put in a public comment for an agenda item before I go on to Mr. Einhorn? No? Okay. Einhorn. Mr. Einhorn, come on down. If you could just say your name, obviously, the rule's two minutes, you got it.
Thank you very much. My name is William Einhorn, and I'm a district employee here at Pots Grove. And I wanted to take a moment to comment on Item 6.1, the resignation of Mr. Kevin Kirby. And on behalf of the middle school, we certainly wish him well in his future endeavors, we wish him very, wish well at his new assignment coming up, and we do wish his family all the best in the world. I do think it's important in relation to this to bring up the fact that since last July, this is now the eighth administrative resignation that we have had. And it's very scary to a lot of us that this is happening. And very simply put, we need stability, especially when it comes to our building admin, we need stability in order for things to move forward. So I just want to call attention to that and hope that going forward, we can have that stability so that we can keep continuing to push forward in education here at Pots Grove. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We're going to move on to the reported superintendent, 5.1.
Thank you. Two items to talk about today. Last month, you may recall that we had our Unified Track Team out in force, and we recognized their accomplishments and what their upcoming community meet. I'm here to report that a big congratulations to Unified Track and Field Team, they placed first in the Upper Mont County Regional Championship. I want to thank the entire team, and not just for how successful their season was, I also want to thank Mr. Anspach and all of his team, the teachers, the coaches, the community members that pitched in to put that event on. For those of you who are fortunate enough to attend that event, we had eight teams here, it had to be a couple hundred athletes, is that right, Mr. Anspach? And it was a first-rate event, and it really shined a super positive light on Pots Grove. And I'm very excited about where we are with it, and also next year when we'll be adding Bachi. So thank you, everyone, and congratulations to the team. I also want to call attention to our team at Ringing Rocks. They participated in the MUSC Checklist Challenge, sponsored by Pennsylvania Health and Wellness Foundation. With this challenge, schools try to attain points in six different wellness categories, and the school with the most points wins. This year, 32 schools participated, and we are excited to announce that Ringing Rocks was awarded the Wellness Champion. So thank you to Ringing Rocks staff for participating in health and wellness initiatives. And that is all I have.
Thank you, Dr. Finerty. We're going to move on to action items personnel, 6.1, I need motions.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve 6.1 through 6.8.
Can you pull that 6.8?
Sure, we do 6.1 through 6.7.
Thank you. I have a motion, a second, to approve 6.1 through 6.7. Do I have any questions or comments?
Comment? I would just like to wish the support staff on the retirement, we have Kathleen Woods, who's an English teacher, 9th grade high school, and Kristen Mutton, student assistant high school, retirement, wishing them a happy retirement.
Any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes, move on to 6.8.
I'll make a motion that we approve 6.8.
I have a motion, a second, to approve 6.8. Do we have any comments or questions?
Congratulations.
So 6.8 is a motion to approve Dr. Ann Marie Lucas as our next Director of Pupil Services. Dr. Lucas participated in a, one, two, three, three, really four-round interview process, and a very strong field of candidates. And Dr. Lucas was the selected candidate, and we are very proud to present her to you this evening.
Do I have any others? One second, one second, before you all clap, let me get approved. Let me vote real quick, then everybody can clap, and then you can say hi. All right, all those in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes now!
Dr. Lucas, are there family members right next to you? That's what I hear. Well, very nice to meet you, and welcome to Pots Grove.
Welcome. We're going to move on to action items business, 7.1.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve 7.1, the Western Center budget.
I have a motion, a second, to approve 7.1, does anyone have any comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes, 7.2, athletic bids.
I'd like to make a motion, we approve 7.2 through 7.7.
I have a motion and a second to approve 7.2 through 7.7. Anybody have any comments or questions?
I have a question. Can we elaborate a bit with regard to the food service change?
Sure. The RFP process, which is regulated by the USDA, requires the district to go out to bid every five years. The last two years, we were under COVID one-year extensions. This year, we were mandated to go to bid. In the bid process, there is a scoring mechanism that's laid out for the vendors to see what the scoring criteria are and the various points that can be awarded in those criteria. If any vendor scores at least 85% of those points, we are permitted to negotiate those contracts further and then reevaluate the bids. Only one vendor scored 85% or more. The current food service vendor did not score an 85% or more, so we're not permitted to negotiate any further on their contract. So we have, nutrition group has been recommended to replace Chartwells. I'm sorry to see Chartwells go.
Can I just ask, I did see an email came through from Chartwells right before I left the house. Have we been with them for 41 years?
As far as I know, they've been here for the 1980s.
How is it that in 41 years, not one other vendor, like, outbid them? Did we actually get bids from other vendors in the past years?
In my tenure here, we've bid it at least two times, and Chartwells was a successful bidder on those two times.
I think we were told in the past we didn't get, like, nobody gave us any bids.
No, we've gotten bids before. And the last round, it was Chartwells and one other vendor.
Okay. All right, thank you. It just seemed that, like, that's a pretty good run for 41 years.
It is. It's been a great relationship.
Do we have any other comments or questions? All those in favor? Any opposed? Obstain? Okay, so we have one abstain, everybody else approves. Motion passes, move on to action items, 8.1.
I'd like to make a motion, we approve 8.1 and 8.2.
I have a motion, a second, to approve both action items under education, does anyone have any comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes, we're going to move on to committee items.
I'd like to make a motion under committee items, we approve 9.1 and 9.2.
I have a motion, a second, to approve both committee items that are just for their meeting minutes, does anyone have any comments or questions on those? Hearing none, all those in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes, move on to operations committee report.
Thank you, Mr. Leach. At the May 10th facilities meeting, we discussed the current budget status at that time. The budget, if I remember right, was at the time we were going to propose, adopt the proposed final at the board meeting following this meeting. The budget at that time calls for a 1.5% tax increase. We are still continuing to work on this budget today, and up until the meeting on June 14th, when the final is scheduled to be adopted. We also discussed the capital projects for the upcoming school year that the facilities department is going to undertake. We got the facilities blessing, and in fact, I think it was on the agenda for tonight to approve those projects. And the last thing that we discussed was my timeline to work with the team at CMD to put out the bid for replacement bus vehicles as we do every year. And that's what we did at that meeting.
Thank you, does anybody have any comments or questions?
I actually have a question, when Mr. Linky just mentioned about the buses, I want to say it was probably two years ago. Remember, we had the vans, and we were talking about trading in the vans, or putting them up for auction, or whatever happened with all of that?
I have to put them up on auction yet. Still working on that.
Because COVID happened in between, not much I remember, but I don't remember what ever happened.
Yeah, in fact, we just sold some of our old maintenance vehicles and got some nice money for it. I was pleasantly surprised, I can't believe that rusted vehicles still sell. But people will use them for parts, or rehab them, and turn them into something like, I know, there's probably a market out there to turn school buses into like an RV-type vehicle. But right now, I still have to get those vehicles up for auction.
We will look for them on eBay or Facebook.
No, they'll be on maintenance of it.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Thank you, Mr. Linky. We're going to move on with the new business, Dr. Finerty?
Nothing for me.
Tina?
None for me, thanks.
Patty?
Yes, tomorrow night is the Western Center Senior Recognition. If anybody would like to come, it's going to be held at Upper Perks New Middle School, I haven't even been there yet. And I signed, I bet you, 250 certificates yesterday. So I'm really excited to celebrate our children and their successes.
Thank you. Jay? Dr. Nipper? Jim? Phil? And Ashley? Nothing from me, we're going to move on to public comment then. All right, so I have three particular public comments. I'm going to bring up Mr. Einhorn, I'm going to bring you up real quick again. Come on up.
Yeah, unfortunately, yes. I feel the same way sometimes, so, William Einhorn, Pots Grove employee.
Mr. Einhorn, and for the public maybe more, we're not doing that to punish people or pull them out, the law requires that we note these things in the minutes.
As long as this is not counting against my two minutes. Thank you, okay. Good evening, I wanted to come here tonight as a follow-up to the presentation that I sent to the Board and Administration last Friday. I want to take a moment to thank those of you that took the time to respond, and special thank you to you, Mr. Leach, for encouraging me to reach out after our initial exchange with emails. Mental health amongst educators has become a major issue over the last several years. Here at Pots Grove, we are not immune to this crisis. This year has presented challenges and issues beyond the normal realm of teaching. These range from discipline, more classroom initiatives, time loss, loss of input when it comes to professional development, and deeply affecting us, the loss of two of our colleagues. Our faculty's morale and mental health is at an all-time low. We recognize these issues as early as the fall and asked our administration to please take a serious look at improving the situation. It is our sincere hope that by bringing this information directly to our school board, we can initiate changes to create a better working environment for not just teachers, but for the many staff that work in our schools. We realize that what was said was not popular amongst some people. However, it is important that you hear unfiltered words from the very people that are in the trenches every day with the students of Pots Grove. We are not here to create conflict with the district, but rather, we wish to avoid conflict. We are simply asking that the district and board work with us in true collaborative effort to stop the crisis before it gets worse. True collaboration meaning that our opinions, concerns, and solutions are given full merit. Nothing we proposed in our solutions, we believe, would cost the district. We want to do our jobs the best we can, day in and day out, we want to be supported in every way possible by the administration and the board, and we have no desire to feel this way anymore. I do hope that a year from now, I can come back to say thank you for listening to us and making this a better place for all stakeholders, and when I say all stakeholders, that especially means the teachers. Thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Thank you. I'm going to bring up our next speaker, which will be Kim Schoner, right?
Sheila.
Sheila. And if you could just state your name, obviously with the town.
Hi, I'm Kim Sheila, I've been a world language teacher here at Pots Grove since 1992. As Mr. Einhorn said, I'm tired, physically, mentally, emotionally, spiritually. I'm specifically tired and concerned for the world language department. Last week, I sent to each and every board member an email stating my concerns, because when Tony Montez announced that he was going for back surgery back in March, he found out the week before he left that his students are not going to have a substitute for the remainder of the year. They're being sent to study halls. Fine, AP is done, those kids, they took their test, they're done, they're graduating. Workplace, that's a one for, there's not a workplace part two. But he has three sections of Level 2. So my concern is for those students in the Level 2 class. Coming into my honors Level 3, or just academic Level 3, the attrition that happens in July and August is astounding. I can't imagine what's going to happen May, June, July, and August. With the passing of Lisa Merritt, it struck me, it shook me to my core. Lisa was a great friend, a wonderful person. So we and the language department are trying to step up and do what we can to help her students get their grades. A solution was given to the administration at the middle school, excuse me, to hire a substitute that is German-certified, and we were told point-blank, no, it's going to be a building substitute covering her classes. But we, as the language department, were asked to create lesson plans for these students. I don't speak German. Our German teacher is picking up the AP courses for Lisa to make sure that these students get their grades through Pitt. Never once was the expression given to us that they're sorry for our loss, that they feel for our loss. And so I understand you can't address me personally, but I'm curious as to why no one reached out as a response to my comment about Tony not having a substitute, nor Lisa. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kim, for your comments. What I'd like to do is have our HR department and follow up with you tomorrow, and we can kind of talk through what you brought up.
And we're going to bring up Andrew Clark. And you know, obviously, the routine.
Yes, Andrew Clark, 17-year teacher here at the high school in the social studies department, and also a member of the Pots Grove Education Association. And good evening to all of you, I'm joined here by a portion of the esteemed teachers that I work with every day in the district, and we simply want to share with you a statement that we'd like for you to read and consider and share with your esteemed colleagues on the board. And I'm simply here to present that to you. So if you'll indulge me, please. Thank you.
Do you have any more, I mean, I didn't get a chance to read this, so. You want me to read this, or what do you want me to do?
You can read it, you're lea, I'll be happy to read it out loud.
Comfortable just having it appended to the minutes?
I'm sorry.
Are you, I'm sorry, are you comfortable just having it appended to the minutes?
Yes.
That's all due.
Yes, so it will be a digital copy sent to all members.
Yes, so it will be a digital copy sent to all members of the board this evening. Yes.
So what it is, just so everybody knows, and we're going to, it's real quick, so I'm just going to read it. I'm going to read it. It just says, "Statement to Pots Grove School Board of Directors, President Mr. Al Leach. We, the understudy members of the Pots Grove Education Association, express our fervent desire for a fair collective bargaining agreement negotiated in good faith and explicitly completed with the school board directors, demonstrating that educator, I'm sorry, that educators are valued and appreciated for all their ongoing hard work during this unprecedented times." Don't disagree at all. And it's, I, I believe this is probably signed by everybody, I would, I would assume, because it's a bunch of pages.
Everyone that wasn't in the hospital.
Thank you, Andy. Do you, do you have further comment?
I do not. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Ramovich, do we have any public comment on, no, thank you.
All right, so I was just conferring to make sure, because the school board has received a notice of emails within the past two weeks. And if you probably noticed, like Mrs. Sheila said, she did not receive any response. Now, generally, we do like to try to respond to everybody, but we did purposely not respond to any of the emails we got from anybody these past two weeks, because we were going to have an executive session just now, which we had prior, so that we could come up with a group decision on how the response is going to be. I am going to send that out to Mr. Shantz, who is the union president, and such like that, so we can get everything clear and such like that, with clearing the air, getting, making sure that everybody is heard and such. I can tell you that we've all seen every one of the emails, and we all understand the situations that we're in right now with mental health. Mental health is an area that is far exceeded just education. It is really bad with it here, it's really bad in the community, it's personally affected just about everybody that's sitting here in this room. So we definitely understand the situation on that. We are working on it. We are working on it, and I am going to be reaching out to John so that we could set something up to help with everything, all the situations and the concerns that he has. All right, so I just wanted to make sure everybody was aware of that. And if we have nothing else, we're going to motion.
I just have one other thing. I'd like to ask for a moment of silence for the people in Texas that happened this evening with the, once again, a school. I'm just asking for a moment of silence. Thank you.
Our heart goes out to everybody else there.
Make a motion, we adjourn.
Second?
I have a motion a second to adjourn. Does anybody have any comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We'll see you guys in two weeks.